I didn't mean that, I mean you know.
Be ready. And wipe that smile off your face Victor.
Okay, we're gonna do scouts now?
Good evening, we'd like to welcome you to our December 20th, 2018 Town Council meeting. This is a special council meeting for us because it's the last one of the calendar year, so we won't be meeting again until January. And it's also the last council meeting for Councilmember Victor Peterson. So let's give him a big round of applause for his eight years of service on the Town Council. I'm Jen Daniels, I'm Mayor of the town, it's the best job in the world, don't tell anybody. And we have Councilmember Jordan Ray, Vice Mayor Bridget Peterson, Councilmember Scott Anderson, I already introduced Councilmember Victor Peterson, Councilmember Eddie Cook, and Councilmember Jared Taylor. In the interest of time, we'd like to start a little bit differently tonight. All of our council meetings start with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'll do that right now. And we'd like to invite Pastor Delmar Gessi to the podium to offer us our invocation. Thank you Pastor.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful town we live in. Thank you for this wonderful council, for this wonderful day Lord, and for this great holiday season. Lord, we pray your blessing on everyone being honored tonight, and for all the deliberations go on. We pray that in Jesus' strong name, amen.
Natalie, come on up. We have invited Natalie to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and she's willing to do so. If everyone would please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Natalie, terrific job. And I love how all of the youth in the room stood and said that proudly. I heard you all, so thank you, thanks for doing that and for being here tonight. It's a very exciting time of year, and we do this very efficiently. And we will have you out of here before seven, that's my promise to you. Since I know some of you have finals, and some of you just have bedtimes, and that's okay. We'd like to thank both of our sponsors, Sal's Gilbert Pizza, right across the street here, terrific partner with the town. They even go so far as to provide meals to our police and firefighters on a very regular basis. And they are great people, so thank you. Another sponsor there is Nitro Live Creamery, and another great Gilbert business where science and ice cream come together. Nothing can go wrong there. So we want to make sure you frequent those, and in the packets there are gift certificates for our students. So thank you. We are really proud of the teachers and all of those who work in our schools. Education is a pillar of our community in Gilbert, and still the number one reason people choose to live in Gilbert. And we're really grateful for the teachers who every day make that happen. I have a sister who teaches third grade, and I spent two days with her this week, and her job is way harder than mine. And so I'm really grateful, especially to our teachers. If you are an educator, teacher, or you work in our schools in any capacity, will you please stand so we can recognize you? For many of them, this is their night off and the last day before the craziest day of the entire semester. So thank you teachers for being here tonight and for helping us honor the students. We have an entire list in here of all of, or each teacher's name that submitted a student citizen tonight. Their name is in here, and I really need some help. You look super excited to be here, will you come up here and help me? Okay, come on up. He looked really relaxed in his chair, so we got him up. Okay, tell us your name.
Colton.
Colton, how old are you?
Ten.
Colton's ten and almost taller than me, so congratulations Colton. Colton, will you draw a name out of this? And if you don't draw your own teacher's name, she'll still, he or she will still like you. Is that your own teacher? Okay, whew. It was gonna look rigged, do you go to Patterson? Is your teacher Mrs. Gibson? Miss Hufford, okay, well Mrs. Gibson's our winner, is Mrs. Gibson here? No, not here today, okay, we'll make sure that Mrs. Gibson gets the certificate. At least you pulled somebody out of your own school, so that's awesome, good job. We do this in three groups. The first group is all of our elementary school student citizens, between Ashland Ranch Elementary and Islands Elementary. So if you are in one of those schools, and you are the student citizen of the month, come on down and line up with Councilmember Ray here. You guys get to show everyone else how to do this. I also want to introduce Lauren Oxford, as our students are coming down. Lauren, raise your hand loud, yep. Lauren is our social media specialist in the town. She's gonna be taking really good pictures that will be available both on Facebook and on Flickr, usually by the end of tonight. So you'll get access to those photos, parents, and grandparents, and guardians, and everyone that's here. And then, you're Patterson, right? Okay. Oh, Charlotte Patterson.
He's in this, he's in this group.
Come on down. That was a good question, you stumped me. But Lauren, we'll take those pictures, parents. This is the best spot to come down, or Little Sisters. I always see Little Sisters come down and take pictures. This is a really good spot to take a picture. So when it's time for your student to be up, we'd love for you to come down and join Lauren here and take that photo. So we'll do this in three groups, and pretty quickly. And Vice Mayor Peterson will actually be the one that reads the names, so Vice Mayor, it's all you.
Thank you Mayor, if I don't say your name correctly, please feel free to let me know, and I will say it again. Tonight we have from Ashland Ranch Elementary, Kensley Caballero. From Bridges Elementary, Aiden Davidson. From Carroll Ray Ranch, Madison Burdos. From Centennial Elementary, Abigail Gillette. Are you Abigail? Over here Abigail, there you go. From Chandler Traditional Academy, Ava Herrera. Is this dad over here? From Chaparral Elementary, Ryland Hoffman. From Charlotte Patterson Elementary, Colton Karzuski. How do you pronounce it, Colton? Karczewski. Colton Karczewski, from Charlotte Patterson Elementary. Not to be confused with Patterson Elementary. That's a little confusing for us though. From Greenfield Lutheran, Ava Yager. From Coronado Elementary, Melissa Odoo. Turn the plaque around. From EduPrize School, Kendra Lewis. From Finley Farms Elementary, Joshua Lafco. From Gateway Point Elementary, Xavier Reynoso. From Gilbert Elementary, Andre Vargas. From Higley Traditional Academy, Edgar Ronan. From Houston Elementary, Carissa Cheatham. From Islands Elementary, and I'm gonna ask her to come up and see the mayor, and we'll get the pronunciation of your name. Your last name is Ryan? Siera Ryan, from Islands Elementary School. I wasn't even gonna attempt that, you guys.
Alright, Group Two is the rest of our elementary school students, so come on down. And you know how to, you know how this works. Parents, we know that it's a school night. If your child has already received their award, we understand completely. If you'd like to scoot out, that does conclude their portion of this. There won't be any additional pictures, so we'll do a quick change, and hopefully some of the families that are in the back can move into the seats. Might be more comfortable. We'll give about two minutes to do the swap.
You can go, you're dismissed, you're dismissed. Group Two, here we go, Mesquite Elementary, Isabella Vosler. Neely Traditional Academy, Katherine Usher. Oak Tree Elementary, Abigail Sabalos. Patterson Elementary, Kella Pandola. Over there. Playa del Rey Elementary, Ewan Adams. Power Ranch Elementary, Natalie Severs. Look over here Natalie. Big camera, there you go. Riggs Elementary, Faye Glynn. Santana Elementary, Connor Maliska. He's smiling. Sonoma Ranch Elementary, Donovan Borre. Spectrum Elementary, Dab and Roll. Town Meadows Elementary, Addison Frost. Valvista Lakes, Matthew Heger-Fike. Big smile. Weinberg Elementary, Elizabeth Sampson.
Group Three is the rest of our junior high and high school students. And in order for me to keep my promise about getting out of here by seven, you don't have to run, but swiftly make your way to the front. Swiftly make your way, swiftly.
They're bigger, they can move faster. I think burgundy's the color of the night. Oh, there we go. Ready? ASU Prep Polytechnic School, John Daris. That's a long school title. It's a long school name. Campo Verde High School, Brooke Blazuski. No Brooke? Any Brooke? No? Canyon Valley High School, Christian Latona. Because we don't keep you busy enough Mayor? Cooley Middle School, Lauren Webb. Gilbert Classical Academy, Kensington McGregor. No Kensington McGregor. Gilbert High School, Catherine Leggett. I saw Mr. Stroud come in. Mr. Stroud's here for Gilbert High. Greenfield Junior High, Julian Colton. Higley High School, Kelly Anderson. No Kelly? Higley High School, Logan Bach. No Logan? Mesquite High School, Lauren Anderson. Mesquite Junior High, Charlotte Reagan. Payne Junior High, Nicole Beard. Perry High School, Glenn Ratifacar. Well, I don't know if I was right or wrong on that one. Sausman Middle School, Colton Campbell. We didn't get that Mayor. Sausman Middle School, Sienna Richards. South Valley Junior High, Brooke Dunin. And South Valley Junior High, Zachary Ritchie.
Thank you to everyone that attended tonight and we hope you have a very merry Christmas and a great break. Take care. Our council meeting, the business of our council meeting will start in about 30 seconds. We have completed our student citizen of the month portion of our meeting and also the invocation and pledge of allegiance. We're grateful to those who participated. We do have one scout here that I'm noticing, so maybe we can invite that scout down and have him introduce himself. We've already completed the pledge tonight, but we'd love to have you at least come down and get your gift. Is that all right? Okay. Councilmember Ray will help you.
Mayor, we're gonna have the Cubs, our boy scout, introduce himself. He's gonna tell us his rank and what troop he's a part of.
My name is Connor Ray. I'm in Leblows and my troop is 923.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. For all the scouts that come to the council meetings, we give them a copy of the Constitution, which will help you in lots of ways, including in your citizenship in the nation merit badge and everything you do in life. So thanks for coming tonight, we sure appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you Councilmember Ray. At this time, we do have some communications from citizens. It's after on my agenda?
Mayor, we have Paul Rodriguez. If you'd like to come down to the podium and give us your name and town or city of residence, please.
And if we could ask the clerk to assist us with the timer, we'll do three minutes. It's on our agenda, the roll call is after communications from citizens, so I'm going in order of the agenda. Go ahead, Paul, thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, council members, Mayor. Mr. Peterson, thank you for your service to the town. I've been out, as you know, I'm involved in the effort to try and trap, neuter, and return all the homeless cats in Gilbert. I've talked to a number of residents. I was out yesterday afternoon in one neighborhood, talked to a couple of homeowners. There's a lot of confusion about what trap, neuter, and return is. It's kind of a tricky concept because people, first of all, people are interested in getting the cats trapped and spayed and neutered, but they want you to take the cats somewhere else. I said, "Well, I'm sorry, I don't really have a place to take those cats. I've got half a dozen in my garage already." And not only that, I'll double check this for the council, but I'm told that it's actually illegal to take, to trap a cat and take it anywhere other than Maricopa County Animal Care and Control. Someone said you might be able to take it to a shelter, but I'm not even sure that's true. So I'll try and check on that. So I've tried to tell people that, you know what? Be careful about that, because I think that that state law, again, and this is conjecture on my part, but I believe that state law was passed to prevent people from literally trapping cats in one neighborhood, for example, in Gilbert, maybe in Park Village where I happen to live, and then taking that cat and dumping it downtown. I believe that was why that state law was passed, because that's what people would do traditionally. That's one thing that some people would do, was literally to take cats. They didn't bother with the spay and the neuter, they just took the cats and dumped them somewhere else. So the other concept that people seem to have trouble with is they don't really understand why it's so important that the cat be brought back to the original location. And the reason is that if you have a, in our case, we had half a dozen cats that showed up on our doorstep. Actually, the mother cat had the litter right there. And we got them spayed and neutered 13 years ago. But we kept those cats, well, we didn't do anything to get rid of them, they just stuck around and we put food out for them. There's only one cat left from that, from that, from that group of cats. And I gotta tell you that those cats did prevent other cats from coming in. I'm not saying there aren't other cats in Gilbert. All I'm saying is they didn't take up residence in my front yard, because there were already cats there. So that's a point that not everybody agrees with, and I understand that. But having experienced it personally, I have a little bit stronger base for subscribing to that. But anyway, it's key, and it's kind of confusing to people. So I'm out there trying to explain to people how the concept works. Again, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Mr. Peterson, again, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Can I have Erin Accursa, please come to the podium, give us your name and city or town of residence, please.
Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Erin Accursa and I am a resident of Gilbert. I'm here with my wife Christine and our three children. We've been residents of the town of Gilbert for nearly 12 years and are here to make a comment of gratitude for the service of Councilman Victor Peterson. We are aware that Councilman Peterson's time on this council is coming to an end and want to publicly thank him for the last eight years where he tirelessly fought in defense of the citizens of this great town. Councilman Peterson, your representation has been outstanding and we are grateful for your leadership and service to our community. You have truly led the charge for maintaining a town government based upon principles of personal freedom, the rights of property owners, and keeping the local government out of entanglement in our personal lives. You have tirelessly worked in the quest of keeping our taxes as low as possible. We, you will be missed. It is our hope that your transition from public life to private life goes well. And we hope that God blesses you and your family abundantly for the sacrifices you have all made on our behalf. Again, Council Peterson, Councilman Peterson, the Accursa family thanks you.
Thank you. We are looking forward to honoring Councilmember Peterson at our January, first January meeting, so we're making, we made sure he's coming back for that one. All right, does that complete our?
Yes, Mayor, that completes communications from citizens.
Thank you. The clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
A quorum is present.
We will move now to our consent agenda and I will ask the Vice Mayor to assist.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Members of the council, Mayor, would like to move item 23 up to our consent agenda, if that's okay with everyone. And Councilmember Cook would like to pull item number one off of the consent agenda. And if that's okay, then I'll go ahead to move to approve items 2, 3, 3A, 4, 5, 6, 7A and B, 8A and B, 9, 10, 11A, B, A and B, 12, 13, and 23.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Councilmember Cook is going to the podium. You don't like your seat up here?
Well, I would like to invite some of my friends on the subcommittee, on the civility subcommittee. Are you, is anyone here? I think I got stood up. Oh, you're coming up. We can't do this alone. So let me give you a little bit of a background on this particular resolution. So in the summer of 2017, I attended a leadership conference where the topic was about civility. And I was extremely intrigued by this. And the premise of it was basically civility in the workplace was basically the topic. And then as I sat through this particular session, it made me think about, you know, my role as an elected official and the current politics that we see both from a local, state, national level and how I saw that there was a lack of civility in many cases. We can agree to disagree respectfully, but it seems like even through this last election cycle, it was pretty painful. But anyways, I brought this idea up to the council almost a year ago and said, "I would love to have and develop kind of a policy related to civility and that maybe the town of Gilbert would be a leader and that other communities could follow our suit." So anyways, I'm gonna introduce, actually, I'm gonna pass the mic down. And are my, some of my team members from staff were part of this journey along with Council, Vice Mayor Bridget Peterson and Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Mike Burkhart from the Fire Department.
Melanie Dykstra, Community Resources.
Jolene Fleck, Human Resources.
I have one question to ask you. What was your experience on the subcommittee and what did you walk away with?
Again, I'm gonna say this in a joking manner, but the whole purpose and the design behind the civility subcommittee was the policy related to not only employees and their engagement with each other, but also with elected officials. And that was the biggest thing that I got out of it. It's understanding that we have the opportunity to agree to disagree, but at the same time, we're not to be disagreeable, so.
I think for me, it was a great reminder of even the word civility. We haven't heard that in a couple of years, I don't think. And so to bring that emphasis back and to make sure that we keep that in the forefront of all of our actions with our internal employees as well as our external customers, I think that was what I appreciated the most.
I feel very happy and proud that I work someplace where these kinds of questions are being asked and we're concerning ourselves with how kind we can be to each other and not how far can we go in the other direction.
Well, thank you. A lot of this is, you know, in a lot of ways is related to the golden rule. And in many cultures and many faiths, the golden rule is pretty much the same language around the world. And the one thing I will add as part of this journey is that even in civility, when it's not going well, or it's even going well, that we can learn how to forgive. And that's one thing I think in our world, forgiveness is not necessarily a religious item, but forgiveness of other things that have wronged you so that we can build community together was really about the premise of the civility. So I'd like to read just a couple lines here in the resolution. This resolution applies to Gilbert elected officials, members of boards and commissions in Gilbert, employees and independent contractors, temporary personnel, volunteers, and other persons doing business for the town of Gilbert or with the town of Gilbert. Gilbert strives to cultivate and maintain a positive, harmonious environment that is inclusive and welcoming. All employees deserve a workplace free of hostility or bullying and should feel safe to be their authentic selves at work without fear of dismissive, humiliating, or insulting language or treatment. Likewise, Gilbert residents and members of the public are entitled to civil discourse in their interactions with elected officials, board and commission members, Gilbert employees, and other town representatives. Parties who have concerns or grievances regarding council, board, or commission decisions are encouraged to share their thoughts in a respectful manner in the appropriate time and place. Respect and integrity are core values of the town of Gilbert, and we respect and conduct our employees to reflect those values. Each of us is responsible for sustaining a culture of kindness in our daily interaction. Examples civility include respect and courtesy in communication and action, respectful acknowledgement of differences and resolution of conflict, empathy, and patience. So with that, Mayor and council, I ask that you consider approving this resolution for us and for our community. And to thank you to the subcommittee and for your time and effort, it was a long 10 months. Very proud to work with all of you, but thank you.
Councilmember Cook, would you like to make the motion?
It is a great pleasure that I move that we approve this resolution for our community.
Second. Please vote. We'll wait till you get here to vote. Or you're allowed to push your neighbor's button. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Cook, and to the entire subcommittee that worked so diligently on that item. We appreciate that. That moves us to our public hearing items. We have several public hearing items this evening. Does the council wish to pull any public hearing items? Am I right?
21A. And Mayor, we have a couple of requests to speak on 21A.
Okay, thank you. I will open the public hearing on agenda items 14, 15, 16, 17, 20, and 21, and I will close the public hearing on those agenda items. close the public hearing on those Agenda Items and entertain a motion. Move to approve?
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Just noting, 18 and 19 have been withdrawn by the applicant, so we will not be hearing those this evening, and that moves us to Agenda Item 20A. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 20A.
Mayor, just a quick comment on this. This is to the rest of the council, and to the public, this is the property we discussed at the last council meeting, with the potential of changing from light industrial to residential, and it was not approved by the council. In order to help the applicant not have to wait an entire year to come back with this, because it was a major plan amendment, I am hoping for reconsideration. My intent is, assuming it passes, and it is reconsidered, that we would then have them go back through the process again of planning and zoning, et cetera, to come back with a new plan, but theoretically, that will take a few months versus a minimum of 12 months, which is required by statute. And so this reconsideration is with that intent.
Thank you. We will need a motion for reconsideration. Any legal advice for us? Because this was a major general plan amendment, do you need a majority for reconsideration?
A simple majority, and the person making the motion has to be one that did not vote against it in the last.
Mayor, I move that we reconsider.
Close the public hearing on this Agenda Item.
I move that we reconsider the council's action on December 6, 2018, of the approximately 124.8 acres located on the northeast corner of Wrecker and Warner Roads.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote on the reconsideration. That motion carries with a 6-1 vote. Thank you.
And then, Mayor, it is my hope, like I said, to have this come back through the process again, and so, are you okay with that motion, Mayor?
Please.
I move, do we need a motion this, Chris, or just give direction?
Mayor, Councilmember Ray, a direction sufficient.
So my direction, if the rest of the council agrees with this, is that we direct staff to accept an amended application for a general plan amendment, GP 18-09, with the intent of working, obviously, with staff, with planning and zoning, et cetera, to go back through the process, and when it's ready to come back to the council, we would then vote on it at that point. Is that fair for the rest of the council?
Councilmember Anderson?
Do we have any discussion on this?
We cannot.
Okay. Fine.
I would highly encourage all council members to please meet with the applicant and give feedback, so that when they come forward, it's a plan that makes sense for council members as well.
We can discuss anything related to the reconsideration, since we have voted on that, but nothing specific to the plan.
Here, that's all I wanted to know, is make sure that we're in touch with them and giving them something. We're not wasting people's time, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. I believe that's sufficient on that Agenda Item. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 21A. Kelly, would you come to the podium and introduce this item as briefly as you need to?
I'd be happy to, Mayor. As you are aware, according to statute, every five years, we need to update our system development fees, and then through this process, there's quite a lengthy list of steps that we go through. We have already done our notice of intent to adopt, and so that what we're here tonight is a public hearing on the land use assumptions and the infrastructure improvement plan, and then the calendar continues on with hopeful effective date in July, on July 8. The land use assumptions are here. We assume that Gilbert will continue to grow and have additional development over the next 10 years, which is the planning window for the study. The service area for all of the fees is the entire town, except for wastewater, which is served by both the Neely and the Greenfield areas. The infrastructure improvements plan includes infrastructure improvements that are necessary to serve growth, that maintain the existing level of service, and that follow the guidelines according to state statute. With this, there are some changes in the rates. On the water side, I'll just give you briefly some of the changes, and a brief note on what might be the major cause of a change in that area. So on the water side, mostly the changes from the cost, the increased cost of water purchase. We've done a lease recently, which you're aware of, are working on getting final signatures on that, and it was more expensive than we had initially planned, and so that's reflected here in the new rates. On the wastewater side, the Neely area is getting close to buildout, and so these rates are coming down. Most of the infrastructure that's needed is already been built. On the Greenfield side, because we were able to sell the bonds for the Greenfield expansion at a better rate than we were planning, we're able to pass that savings on in the system development fees, so that's a great benefit here. On the fire system development fees, we're doing a build, excuse me, incremental expansion approach, so buying into the investment of the infrastructure that we already have, we have all the fire stations that we'll need through buildout, and so this better captures those costs than the prior study did. On the police, we have the system development fees. The split between residential and commercial has changed a bit, and that's based on the actual calls that we're seeing as the town continues to grow and have more business than it did in the past. On the traffic signals, most of the cost change here is due to the escalation of the CIP projects, increased cost of those projects. On the road system development fee, this is brand new. We have not charged one in the past. When we met in February, we discussed that there are additional roads that are needed in the town of Gilbert, and some of them are related to growth. And so, at your direction, we had the consultant look at what that might include, and what we have included here for discussion are only the growth-related portions of the roads. It is new. Most of our peer communities are already charging a roads fee, so it's not unusual. We just hadn't been charging one in the past. There's a parks and recreation fee. Mostly, the increase here is due to the escalation of the different project costs. And then the general government system development fee is allowed for grandfathering purposes, but will finish when the debt associated with this area finishes. And most of the change here is just a shifting between the residential and commercial as the functional population changes. Overall, what we're seeing is there's a shift in how the fees are collected, the ratio of the fees that we're already collecting, and then I highlighted in yellow so you could see the roads fee. Most of the increase in the overall fee is associated with that new fee. The others are just shifting between different types of categories. With that, our purpose tonight is to be able to have public dialogue, have the study out and available for the public. We've had great feedback from our stakeholders so far, which is why you've seen an update for today's packet compared to what we initially published. We've tried to incorporate that feedback in and really work with our stakeholders, but we've had great response from them. And with that, I'll open to any questions.
Thank you, Kelly. Are there any questions? Councilmember Peterson?
Have we done a really good look on what the other communities' total system development fees will be compared to ours after they adopt their changes? Because I know a lot of them are reworking theirs as well. And I asked the question because my biggest concern with this, and, you know, I've done a little bit of the research and the math, but not as much as maybe I should, but overall, I'm just concerned that I think we're kind of at the top of the market, if you will, as far as cost, especially with other changes. I hear some other communities will actually go down after this next cycle. So what can you tell us about the comparison to other communities?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, I have not, I don't have full data on what the other communities are doing, because they're mid-process as well. There were major changes in the statute at the same time, so we all adopted our fees about the same time, but we can look at what they have started to publish. Not all of them are as far along in the process as we are. And so, we've done some comparison to what the fees are before any communities change. We are towards the higher end. Different communities charge different fees. They don't all charge the same types of fees that we do, and some of it will depend on where they are in their buildout cycle. Cities that are closer to buildout will have less infrastructure needs than cities who are mid-process or as large as we are and still growing as strong as we are. So there's, it's hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison, but yes, dollar-for-dollar, we typically are on the higher end of the range.
I could just add to that, because Kelly and I had a conversation today, met with Jackson Moll, which I was grateful for his time. I think he's driven out here now twice today, so thank you, Jackson, for doing that. But really, if you look at the life cycle of the city and where we are, also what we're seeing as far as market conditions, as it relates to costs of construction, those numbers are high right now. They're not going down. They're going up through TPC and through MAG, and also through ADOT, seeing the cost of building some of the arterial infrastructure, as well as the freeway system, cost of right-of-way, all of these things are just much higher than they have been in the past. And so, I do think we need to take into account where we are. Those costs are passed along. The cost of homes has risen substantially in the town of Gilbert over the past several years. I think good indicators that the community is thriving, but also something that, of course, we're keeping an eye on as there's changes. And we do this study every three years, right, Kelly?
Every five, yes.
Every five. So the next time we go through this, we may be in a totally different cycle, but I'm not sure if we're bidding projects out over the next two to three years, if things will change substantially. So just knowing where we are, I don't know that we really can compare ourselves to other cities, because we have unique circumstances, and frankly, we're getting emails weekly about road construction needs, daily, actually, certain areas of town where citizens are asking, "When are you going to complete X intersection or Y road?" So are there any other comments from council? Any other questions for Kelly? Thank you, Kelly. I'm going to turn to Vice Mayor for the two communications from citizens.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite Miles Pinter to the podium. If you could just give us your name and city of residence, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Miles Pinter. I'm with Marrikey, representing Marrikey Homes, address 15279 North Scottsdale Road in Scottsdale. As I mentioned, I'm with Marrikey. Marrikey has been building homes in Gilbert for decades now. Many of the quality communities that residents call home in Gilbert were built by Marrikey. We've always enjoyed building in Gilbert and helping to shape the town into the quality community that it is today. As we review these proposed fees, we had some concerns that we wanted to bring to everyone's attention. Like you had just brought up, Councilmember Peterson, there are nearby municipalities that are decreasing fees. Chandler, for example, has just proposed, and they're in the process of adopting a $5,000 per home decrease in the impact fees that are charged. The one fee in particular I'd like to draw attention to is the roads fee. There are really only four major roads that are brought to light in the study, one of them being the Ocatilla Road, the wash crossing from Greenfield to Higley. It's almost a $60 million project out of the roughly $100 million in the study that is being put, the burden is being put on new development. We looked, there's roughly 85% of the town is built out. There's only 15% left to build for new development, and that is, that burden is being put solely on the new development. Marrikey, over the last year, we've invested $56 million into Gilbert in two projects, let alone what we're currently selling here, as well as communities that will be opening here in the next couple quarters. So this potentially has, you know, a several million dollar impact on not only our bottom line, but other home builders and developers as well in the area. Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'd like to ask that you also maybe sit down with staff outside of this meeting and have some more dialogue, because I think some of your numbers just might, we're not, we're not quite at 85% yet. That would be, that would be exciting, though. All right, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to invite Jackson Moll down to the podium and give us your name and city or town of residence, Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name's Jackson Moll. I'm the Vice President of Municipal Affairs for the Home Builders Association of Central Arizona, and I work and reside in the city of Phoenix. I'm here tonight to express our current opposition to the proposed Land Use Assumptions Infrastructure Improvements Plan and corresponding system development fees. Generally, we have five principles that we use when evaluating these updates. Number one, whether the ultimate fee payer is the beneficiary of the service for which the fee is assessed. Number two, whether the service will be provided in a timely fashion. Number three, whether the new user is being asked to pay for a higher level of service than is currently being provided to existing residents. Number four, whether the total cost of the service is distributed proportionately amongst new users based on the burdens created. And five, whether the proposed system development fees comply with state law. Shortly after the town posted this update for public comment, I met with town staff for an extensive review of specific questions and concerns that we had about the proposed draft. We also had a subsequent meeting to discuss the new roads fee. Yesterday, Ms. Fost was kind enough to forward me an updated version of the proposed Land Use Assumptions and Infrastructure Improvement Plan, which appears to address at least some of the concerns and questions that we raised, but we have not yet had an opportunity to fully evaluate the revisions to determine where there are remaining areas of disagreement. Therefore, we remain opposed to the proposed update. However, as we have done in the past, we will continue to work with staff to hopefully get a satisfactory resolution to any remaining issues. Finally, I want to express my appreciation to staff for the hard work during this process. They have been extremely thoughtful in their consideration of our requests, and very responsive with feedback and additional information. I'm looking forward to continuing to work through the process with them and with the council, and while we are currently opposed, I remain optimistic that we will reach an outcome that benefits both builders and the town. Thank you again for the opportunity to comment this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Jackson? All right, thank you, Jackson. Merry Christmas. Have fun. He's going to give his son like a really cool Christmas present that I'm hoping he will share a photo of at some point. It's really exciting. All right, any other questions or concerns from council? All right, I don't think we give a motion on this one tonight. Correct. Okay, we will close the public hearing then, and we will move on to Boards, Commissions, and Committee reports from the council. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Can I put a Subcommittee report in here? Couple of council meetings ago, you assigned this side of the dais to do a Subcommittee on building codes. We've had two meetings, and one of the things I wanted to make sure that the public knows, I think it's going to go live today or tomorrow, is going to be a forum to gather public feedback. And the forum is similar to what we did at the state level, where someone can go in and identify a particular code they want to make a comment on. It'll capture that, and that's going to run through January 12. We can extend it if we need to, but just trying to back into the date you gave us to report back, that'll be the public comment period, so it's starting here tomorrow. We have a little splash page describing what we're doing, when we're meeting. I appreciate Councilman Anderson and Peterson, and since Victor's transitioning, we may need another person on that Subcommittee, so is that, is she, is she, okay, good.
I don't know where she is.
Okay, so she'll be on the Subcommittee? Okay, good. Figured that would be, didn't want to assume, but that'll be great. We'll welcome her. I'll reach out and brief her, but I wanted to just make sure that public knows that we're going to start gathering feedback, and if people don't want to comment on a specific building code and just give a general comment, the forum can take that as well. So through the process, we want to make sure that people know what we're doing, how they can participate, and bring a lot of, a lot of good discussion to it. We're going to also, by February, bring staff's comments in, synthesize those through the month of March, and be ready for an April report out. So I want to thank Kyle and his team for supporting this. It's a little thing, but I think we're going to work through a lot of details that important prior to coming back to council.
Any other Boards, Commissions, or Committee reports? All right, moving on. We've already completed our policy items, future meetings, and a report from our town manager on current events. Maybe he could stand up in his outfit and make sure we get the full view.
Fashion never goes out of style. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I wanted to first recognize Melanie Dykstra and Robert Crop in our Community Resources Department, as well as help they received from Fire Resources. They adopted a senior this year through the Chambers Program at Christmas, and the senior had requested food that would not spoil. And if everybody, and we all know Melanie, Melanie went above and beyond and found a refrigerator that she got donated, and actually found a donated refrigerator for that senior as part of that program this year. So she always goes above and beyond for everybody, but that was a, I'm sure, a very unexpected gift and a very kind gift, and we thank Melanie and Robert and everybody who helped participate in making that happen. Outside of that, Mayor, I just want to thank all of our employees. Outside of that, Mayor, I just want to thank all of our employees for another great and successful year here in Gilbert. They're very dedicated to our residents and enjoy service to this community. Wish all of you a happy holidays.
Thank you. Any report from council on current events?
To echo what Patrick said about how great the employees are, I want to say thank you to all the Parks and Rec employees who it seems like have an activity every single night or weekend this month. The Riparian Lights has been a huge success with my family again this year, but such a busy time of the year, and most of these employees are working nights and weekends. So thank you for all that Parks and Rec's doing right now.
They got some cinnamon rolls from the council, just so you know. We wanted to make sure they had enough fuel to keep going because tomorrow night and Saturday night are the last of the Riparian Lights, which again, as you've commented, are one of the favorite events in Gilbert. Any other report from council on current events? Councilmember?
Mayor, January 8, we're going to have a ceremonial meeting, so I'll save some of my comments there, but I didn't want to let tonight go past. This is the last night that I will have any official business for the town, and I just want to comment on how grateful I am to all the citizens, those who are activists, and I say that lovingly because that's how I got started in politics, also to the town staff, and certainly to my peers, the council members, for the years that we've worked together. I can't express what a deep honor it has been for me to serve in this capacity, and I will always treasure those memories and hopefully also will continue those relationships into the future. So with that, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and whatever other holidays you might celebrate. But it's truly a beautiful time of year. I wanted to celebrate love and kindness, and I encourage everyone to go out there and find somebody to serve who needs your help. That will really make your holiday the best it can be. Oh, also, I just will mention, I want to thank George. I guess George Dottle bought a cake out there for me. I had no idea. So it used to have my name on it, "Goodbye, Victor," and I'm thinking that was a kind goodbye. That's the way I'm interpreting that. So thank you for that, George, and we've had some nice conversations together as well. So with that, thank you, Mayor, for the moment.
Of course. Yes, I'd like to echo those sentiments, appreciation for your work on the council, Victor, and I'll have a lot more to say on January 8 and maybe just a little bit of fun to poke, too, because that's my way. That's my way of showing appreciation and admiration. All right, Merry Christmas to the entire town of Gilbert. Thank you all for being here tonight and have a great holiday. Take care.